Hi, Mr. President. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. My name is Peter Angelini, Chairman. I'm joined by the other two members, Councilor Pauline Cormier and Councilor Robert Tossi. I know we invited Officer Ramos this evening. I think Mr. Roseberry is here as representative from the DPW. Would you like to come up and take a stab at this? Madam Clerk, I'm assuming that you did ask Officer Ramos to be here this evening?
I did, and Chief Kennedy said they defer to whatever the DPW would like.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Well, that makes it easier. This is petition forty-one dash twenty-four. Officer Julio Ramos, Lemonster Police Department, request to amend Chapter thirteen of the revised ordinance entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. Chapter thirteen, section thirteen dash twenty-four of the revised ordinance entitled No Parking on Certain Streets, by inserting the following text: Church Street, West Side, south of Miriam Avenue, for one hundred thirty-six feet; Church Street, West Side, starting from two hundred forty-eight feet south from Miriam Avenue, ending at the intersection of Church Street and West Street. See attached map. Hope everyone has most recent iteration of the map that was provided. So, John, as you may be aware, we had some it was some confusion. The last time this was before us because originally DPW offered a refer, excuse me, a referral on this matter, and we kicked it back to Officer Ramos, who submitted a new petition. And then when we were asked for a revised referral from DPW, it seemed to conflict with the original. So could you tell us where DPW stands on this petition?
Now it's on. For the record, John Roseberry, Senior Engineer at the DPW. I reviewed these. The first one, the first addition that he submit petition that he submitted was thirty-five twenty-four. And it eliminated all of the no parking on all of Church Street. So it went a little too far. But he also deleted the he inserted the correct part was the one thirty-six and then that whole business and then for another two hundred sixty feet. That's all right. But then it, so it went too far, so we had to rescind it or do another petition. And this one was the footage is correct. The one thirty-six from Miriam and then the two forty-eight, that's correct. But he omitted the deletion of the existing, which was the six hundred feet of Church Street. Otherwise, you'd have had overlapping no parking zones, which would have been, I would think would be confusing. So I think the petition as it stands, I mean, you could you could approve it now, but he'd have to follow up with another one to delete the six hundred foot long no parking area. I hope that clears it up.
All right, John, just give me one second here, because I'm not, I don't see the six hundred foot. That was on the it's not reflected. Do you have forty-one twenty-four in front of you?
I do.
Okay.
I did. I did make a sketch. Did the sketch go around? It's half the sketch. So, okay, yeah. Well, this is as it comes into he's trying to eliminate the no parking area for the bump out that's in front of the Gallagher Building. But the police station no longer there. It's no longer necessary to have no parking in that spot because you can still pass two vehicles in the travel lanes well enough. And as of right now, it's the full six hundred feet of no parking from Miriam to West Street. They want to take that bump out and use the one hundred thirty-six feet. One hundred thirty-six feet and then Church Street on the west side, starting two hundred forty-six feet. One forty-eight feet, south from Miriam, ending at the intersection of Church. You were to add up the entire thing, it's six hundred feet, but he doesn't have the bump out, which is the difference with the six hundred. I'm not sure.
I'm not sure how else. Are you suggesting that the six hundred feet is already out of the ordinance?
It is. That's what he was eliminating, deleting.
This would need to reference the existing ordinance, deleting that section.
Yes, which is what he did on thirty-five twenty-four. He deleted the six hundred feet. But he also deleted two hundred sixty feet north of Miriam, which is the piece of church going towards St. Leo's, which we didn't want to do because the road is much narrower. But you really didn't want to have people parking on both sides of the road.
So he didn't carry forward one of the important parts of the original petition.
Correct.
To the second one.
Correct.
I think we
Oh, you want to?
No, I'm not sure we're in a position. I mean, I'll leave it to the chairman, but we'd have to amend it at minimum, so.
A significant amendment.
I think so.
So I mean, I'm afraid we're probably going to have to
Give this leave to withdraw?
We give it leave to withdraw and ask him to resubmit it with the appropriate language and hopefully third time will be a charm.
Hope so.
Make sure we ask him to run it by John before he submits it. Madam Clerk, would you see that goes out in correspondence, please? All right, John. Mr. Roseberry, thank you very much. I shouldn't excuse you yet. We may be other questions for you. Let me go to Members of Legal Affairs, Councilor Cormier.
I think you're absolutely right. What you're saying makes sense. So I would agree. So I'll start from the beginning.
Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
Thank you. Members of the council, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
It would be helpful, too, next time that we have a full map of the area because we only have one section of it. So it's impossible to make sense of.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Let me go to the public. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition forty-one dash twenty-four? For the second time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to petition forty-one dash twenty-four? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition forty-one twenty-four? Seeing none, I would declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Chairman, we do have six minutes before we have to start the meeting if you want to start the second hearing. Yeah, I think we're all set with John, right? Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Ready to go? Yeah. Okay. This is a public hearing of the Legal Affairs Committee. Petition twenty-five dash twenty-four, Peter Angelini Wood, five, Councilor, request to revise the amended Lemonster City ordinance by inserting a new section regarding short-term rental units. See attached. This has been a continued public hearing for since it looks like February, actually, January twenty-second. I will actually, for the record, I will be asking leave to withdraw without prejudice in this petition. Having completed the research, I'm comfortable with that recommendation at this time. I will go to Members of Legal Affairs, Councilor Cormier.
I agree.
Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
Anyone else on the council wish to opine? Seeing none, I'll go to the public. Is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to petition twenty-five dash twenty-four? Yep. There we go.
I can use my teaching voice, but I know this is being recorded, so. I'm here this evening to follow up on this petition or this change, request change for ordinance. I've been following this issue since the counselor presented it back in December. And I also watched on TV and heard the impassioned plea from the couple that had an issue with their neighbors regarding a short-term rental, but actually, the issue from what I could hear and see from the meeting was really about a problem with a property issue and that being a shared driveway that was causing the problems for those residents. And I certainly empathize with them about that issue because that certainly can become very difficult in that situation. However, I don't personally believe that to go to this extreme of completely eliminating the role of short-term rentals in the city is the answer to that problem. I think that that certainly could be rectified between the parties. And even though I know that this has gone through a process, like all things that come before you, in that it has been referred to the various entities in the city, such as the Building Department, the Health Department, the Planning Board, the Police, to review and get recommendations. In watching your meetings, I really haven't been able to garner enough information from what those recommendations or whether they were in favor of this or they were against this and for what reasons, because the full text of their comments were not written, read into the meetings from at least the parts I heard. So I'm a little concerned that I haven't heard a huge outcry about problems with short-term rentals in the city. And so I did a little quick research, nothing scientific at all. But just as a regular resident, I went online recently and took a look and to see how many actual rentals of this type were being offered in our city. Because honestly, I'm sure, like most of you, having been a lifelong resident here and having used the services of Verbo or Airbnb when I travel with my wife or my family, I just didn't think that honestly, that this city would have any such rentals, because I don't, I guess, you know, when you're here, you live here, you become accustomed to the things that we have and the activities we have. And you just don't sometimes realize what's in your own backyard and what might attract other people to come here and use this type of service. So much to my, I guess, pleasure was the fact that I found very quickly over ten rentals in Verbo and Airbnb combined in the city of Lemonster. And lo and behold, those rentals have been active in the city, many of them for over five years, some as many as six and eight years. And so that kind of got me thinking along the lines of, well, I know this became, as I say, an issue for one particular person, but having not heard or seen any incidences published in the newspapers, the local newspapers, about problems with these types of rentals in our community, it just, again, kind of emboldened me to the fact that what's really the problem here?
And I'm going to ask you alt for a moment. We're going to open the regular meeting now. I'll take the role of the councilors in attendance, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier. Councilor Oringer. Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Tossi. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr. Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Council Freedom.
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. All nine councilors are in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have a report on minutes?
Mr. President, I'm told that there are still some amendments to be made to those minutes, so I would ask for further
Very well, that may be done. I'll entertain a motion to go into recess. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, Second Councilor Robbins, all in favor, please recognize usual manner. Okay, we're in recess. Mr. De Chico, you can continue.
Thank you. I appreciate that. So as I was saying, with no real evidence of major problems, either reported by our police department, our health inspector, a board of, excuse me, our building inspector, related to this, specifically to these issues of these short-term rentals, I really feel like there's not a necessity to push a nuclear button and create a ban on this type of enterprise. I think that sometimes in haste, we fail to see what the, you know, unexpected consequences can be of taking such a drastic action and very quickly. For one thing, I mean, I think that if you read some of the reviews of people who have stayed in these properties in our city, it becomes quite evident that the reason they're staying in these properties is because they're coming to the city for various activities that we have. And we offer an awful lot in this city. Notwithstanding competitions, people commenting about ski trips, cheerleading competitions, and amongst all the activities that the city itself offers. So, you know, it's the old adage, if you build it, they will come. Well, many of you have been here for many years and you've supported the economic development of Lemonster and these types of activities. And in doing so, rightfully so, you have attracted a large number of people from the outside of the community that now want to join us. And so by shutting this opportunity down, you're not only stopping that tourism mechanism, but you are affecting the people who own these properties. Now, not all of these properties are necessarily owned by people who live out of our city. There are many people who are residents of the city that are operating these homes. And there are instances where people who have been longstanding residents, like myself and many of you, homeowners, that now are retired. They are snowbirds. They use this opportunity to continue to be able to afford to pay their taxes and their commitments to the city of Lemonster by renting their homes out when they take a month to go to Florida or two months to go to Florida or wherever they go to escape the harsh winter elements. So we are also impacting our own residents and their ability to basically stay in their homes and to maintain those properties and do a great job.
Just to clarify, so you don't misinform the public, the building inspector has already taken the position that these are not allowed in Residence A, which is what this ordinance that's being withdrawn sought to do.
Okay.
In addition to that, the city solicitor has suggested they are likely prohibited residence, residence A by the case law already. So just to clarify what you're saying, so the public will not get the wrong impression.
Okay, that's fine. I will stand corrected, certainly. But again, I just hope that you give it extra consideration. I know this is dragged on for a long time for some people. And I know you've extended the meetings in some cases because you wanted to have a full contingency here to make, to take a vote. But I, again, I just hope that you'll reconsider because subjecting one area of our community to a ban essentially does impact the rest of the community as well. So I don't know, again, I'm not going to question your interpretation, or I should say, the city solicitor's interpretation about Residence A. But obvious, it's quite obvious to me that many of these have been operating, again, without any problems. And they're certainly within the confines of Resident A districts. So whether it's legal or not, that's a different question, obviously. But it's not because, and it shouldn't be voted as a result of we have all this massive problem that we have to solve, or we have to create this tool to solve a problem that, in my opinion, doesn't exist. But again, if it is prohibited by law and based on our zoning, obviously, you don't have a choice. Thank you for your time.
You're welcome. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. De Chico. Is there anyone else in attendance this evening that would like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to petition twenty-five dash twenty-four? And for the third and final time, is there anyone in attendance this evening that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition twenty-five dash twenty-four? Seeing none, Chairman, Mr. President, I would declare this public hearing closed. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll now conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. First person signed up this evening is John De Chico. Thank you, John. Next is Sharon De Chico. Okay, we're on a roll. Peter Campabasso. Didn't think you were going to.
But I'll be brief. Peter Campabasso, Three Park Street, Lemonster. I'm here to speak regarding Communication fifty-seven, which is the transfer of two parcels of land off of Basset Street. I have worked in the past for Mr. Mazafaro, who is the current owner of the land, and I currently am working with Peter Di Poli, who has the lots under agreement. In doing the title, I discovered that if you look at the current assessor's map, what the assessors call as Edward Street is a paper street. And when you search the records at the Registry of Deeds, the owner of the land is the city of Lemonster. Back in the thirties, there were a series of tax takings where land was taken for non-payment of taxes. In nineteen fifty, the city had a plan prepared that was entitled the Barrett Forest Park Lots. That plan is recorded at the Registry of Deeds. In nineteen fifty-seven, there was a revision to the plan. However, that plan was not recorded at the Registry of Deeds. And what happened between nineteen fifty-seven and nineteen sixty-three, the city did a series of conveyances where they abandoned what was called Antonia Court. And they created what they thought would be Edward Street. But Edward Street has never been improved. It's not a public way. When you search the records at the City Hall and at the DPW, there was never any action or vote by the city. So the current owner owns on both sides of Edward Street. It's a it's a paper street. And in order to clear the title, we would need the city to abandon and then convey. So that's what the request is. I don't think that there's a realistic municipal purpose for the city to retain the land, nor do I think the city wants to improve it as a public way. So it would make sense that it would be abandoned and go to the owner of the land on both sides of the road. And that's what the communication will accomplish. Thank you. I'll stay and answer any questions for clarification if there are any.
Thank you, Peter. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter, and thank you for the information. We got your email this afternoon that had that detail, so that was helpful. So my question is, Basset Street, right? And where the landowner's land is, is right across from the Lassie League field?
Correct.
Correct? And is, how far up is it? Is it across from the fields or is it also across from the parking area? It's kind of a
So Basset Street from Central Street goes up to the fork, right up to the fork is public. And then beyond that, up around the corner, the Lassie League fields are on the left-hand side. Mr. Mazafaro's land is on the right-hand side.
That's right.
So it goes all the way down and it will be across. But the request, the parcel that we're trying to get conveyed is not a part of the Lassie League area at all. It's in the middle of his lands.
Right, 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 right. No, I understand that. But my question is, so what's the plan for the Basset Street side? Because, you know, if there's a paper street put in, I imagine people want to develop, you know, on both sides. No, that's okay.
I think the intention would be to go before the planning board and present some type of a plan. Since this is an unimproved way, they would have to file more than likely a subdivision plan before the city. And if improvements have to be made to that roadway, they would have to be made.
I'm just trying to get a sense of what the impact is going to be on the Lassie League, you know, on their parking. And
Well, wherever, I'm not familiar with where the parking is.
Okay.
But any use of Mr. Mazafaro's land would not be able to interfere or take over any area that is being used by the Lassie League field or the right-of-way. You know, he could only use it for the same way that everybody else passes and repasses.
And on the map or on the drawing that we had, so Edward Street, which is the paper street.
Correct.
Goes straight and then it turns left. Does that go up to Antonia Court? I couldn't figure out where it was connecting.
That was one of the proposed ways that never got improved.
Okay.
Antonia Court was closer to Central Street.
Right.
Fifty-seven, the city relocated it essentially to where Edward Street is located. And the street that was sort of above was abandoned as well. That's what the fifty-seven plan shows.
Okay.
The part that's down at the end, the city has conveyed different portions to the people that own on that side. I can't remember what the name of the street is. So it's just dead land, just like the other paper street.
Okay.
Councilor? Hey, you might want to hang around, Peter. Council Freedom, I told you.
Before I ask any questions, are we going to have any kind of a discussion about this? Because I don't know the back and forth in a public forum.
We're in a public forum. I gave
I'm not objecting, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of questions here, and I don't know if we want to take all the time for now, but
That's why I asked them to hang around, because we may have to go into recess when it comes. Okay? Yep.
You want me to wait, John?
You can ask now if you want.
The people on Antonia Court? Are not on Antonia Court?
No, Antonia Court was abandoned in nineteen fifty-seven.
You said they're still on Antonia Court?
No. There is not. It was moved up. The city, the landowners conveyed their interest in what is called Edward Street to the city of Lemonster. The city of Lemonster conveyed to the owners at the time what's called Antonia Court. So Antonia Court does not exist. The only lots that the city sold were to the landowners that are directly on Central Street. They bought those lots, they built those homes. And that's, and then there was one around the corner on Basset Street.
I could have sworn there were people living on Antonia Court. I, I could have sworn there were people living on Antonio Court. I, I could, I, I'm sure I'm wrong if you're saying that, but.
The only, the only residence is the one that, um, is on, I think it's Five Basset Street. And then there's a portion of Antonio Court that is closer to, uh, the industrial, but that's not a part of this Barris For- Forest Park.
Oh, so you're not saying all of Antonio Court is abandoned?
No.
Oh, that's, that was my question. Cause it sounded like you're saying Antonio Court is now Edwards.
Just, just the portion that is on the Barris, the Barrett Forest Park lots.
Uh, alright. You answered that quick, cause I, I knew, I knew people living there. I didn't think that they would think that they weren't there.
Right. I apologize for the confusion.
So according to the maps, there's a medio drive. There's a, there's a, there's a portion of Antonio Court that's paper.
Right.
That is the s- south of a medio drive. I think that's what you're talking about.
Correct.
Not, right. Cause there is in the Antonio Court, and there's about six houses on it.
Right.
That runs from Tossy Street to, you know, a medio drive.
There you go, Tossy Street.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just to clarify, if they're watching tonight, I don't want them to think that they don't live there. Um, because that's what it sounded when you, when you suggested there was no Antonio Court, it was abandoned.
Okay.
I, I think there's a, I, I have a lot more questions, but I
Alright, well, let's wait for the meeting. Okay, better stick around. Um, last person signed up, uh, for the public forum is Peter Di Poli. You don't have to speak. Okay, have a seat. Alright, um, we're, um, now back in regular session. Starting off with communications from the mayor and C sixty-four.
C six, C sixty-four, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requested an appropriation of seventy-six thousand four hundred ninety dollars be made to the Energy Efficiency Block Grant Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. The city of Leominster will be receiving seventy-six thousand four hundred ninety dollars from the Federal Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant Program. The program is designed to assist states, local governments, and tribes in implementing strategies to reduce energy use, to reduce fossil fuel emissions, and to improve energy efficiency. As you know, several years ago, we received a grant to upgrade the furnace at City Hall to save money and conserve energy. Recently, Reese, Reese received a Green Communities Grant for the installation of heat pumps in City Hall. These funds will further increase our energy efficiency by replacing windows in City Hall. The grant program is a reimbursement program, which will provide one hundred percent reimbursement of this request once the project is complete.
C sixty-four is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-four has been given regular course. Moving on to C sixty-five.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requests that an appropriation of twenty thousand dollars be made to the paramedics' overtime account, expense account. The same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And likewise, C sixty-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C sixty-five has been given regular course. C sixty-six.
C sixty-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requested an appropriation of two hundred fifty thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department Public Safety Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
And C sixty-six is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
I'm gonna abstain from this and defer to the Clerk of, um, Finance, please.
Very well, uh, Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Very well, C sixty-six can be given regular course. Moving on to C sixty-seven.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, requested an appropriation of one million four hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars be made to the general fund capital accounts listed below, same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. These funds are needed to fund the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four capital requests from various departments. Please see list below in the attached, attached accompanying documents to follow. Account number one fifty-four, institutional technology, one hundred fifty-four thousand dollars. Account number one ninety-two, building maintenance, fifty thousand dollars. Account number two-ten, police department, one hundred fifty-four thousand one hundred ninety-nine dollars. Account number two-fifteen, public safety communications, seventy thousand dollars. Account number two-twenty, fire department, three hundred seventy-one thousand dollars. Account number two-twenty-five, ALS, ten thousand dollars. Account number two-forty-five, wire department, one hundred thousand dollars. Account number two-ninety-four, forestry, twenty thousand dollars. Account number three-hundred, school department, four hundred two thousand dollars. Account number four-ninety-one, cemetery, eighty thousand dollars. Account number five-ten, health department, eighteen thousand dollars. Account number five-forty-one, senior center, thirty-three thousand dollars. Account number six-ten, library, ten thousand dollars. Total request, one million four hundred seventy-two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
And C sixty-seven is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Thank you. C sixty-seven has been given regular course. Moving on to C sixty-eight.
C sixty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request the city council review and accept the proposed intermunicipal agreement between the city of Leominster and the town of Lunenburg for wastewater collection, treatment, and disposal.
This is listed as city property on the agenda, but I'm gonna reassign it to Legal Affairs and refer to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
And thank you, Mr. President. Um, first time on the calendar, regular course with referrals to the Economic Development Coordinator, Ms. Curtis, uh, the Assessor, uh, the Treatment Plant Operator, and, uh, Jake Fleming, the Wire Department. And would you ask if we could have Mr. Fleming come down for the, have the hearing on this? Mr. Fleming?
From the board.
Or Mr. Racine, or both?
Sure.
Thank you.
Very well, C sixty-eight has been given regular course with a referral to the Economic Development, uh, Director, Assessor's Office, the Treatment Plant Operator, Jake Fleming, and Councilor Freedom, do you have another suggestion?
Uh, no, I just have a question. Isn't this just, um, a renewal of the, of this agreement that we have already?
It is.
This isn't something new. Just an, an increase, I'm sure, but it's not, I, I'm just thinking economic development. Um, it's, it's not anything new, so.
Right. It's the chairman's call. That's what he wants. I'm gonna go with that. Um, it is a twenty-five-year contract that's expiring, um, and it's a long contract and, uh,
I was here when we did the first one.
Gotta be careful. Okay, very well. Anything else? Alright, moving on to C sixty-nine.
Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the city council vote to amend Chapter twenty-one, Article two, Section twenty-one dash eleven point one, and Chapter twenty-one, Article three, Section twenty-one dash twenty-two point three of the Leominster City Ordinance, increasing water and sewer rates as follows. See attached.
C sixty-nine is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Once again, C sixty-nine, first time on the calendar, a regular course. Um, and, uh, Madam Clerk, have Mr. Fleming and Mr. Racine here for this hearing as well.
Do you want this hearing on the next meeting on the thirteenth of May?
Yes.
Okay, and we'll do that for, um, six-thirty-five P M.
Okay, so you heard the request, uh, to schedule a public hearing on May thirteenth at six-thirty-five P M. Uh, give the matter a regular course and have Mr. Fleming and Mr. Racine attend, uh, that hearing. Uh, all those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, that may be done. Moving on to forty-five dash twenty-four.
Oh, C seventy.
Moving on to C seventy, um, suspension of the rules. Uh, all those in favor of suspending the rules. Okay, that may be done. Alright, thank you, Mr. Robbins. Um, with that said, all those in favor of suspending the rules for C seventy, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, the rules are suspended. And, um, Madam Chair, Madam Clerk, will you read C seventy, please?
Mr. President, just a point of order. Um, why is this under Finance? This has always traditionally been under Ways and Means.
You're, you're up the gun. I'm gonna get to that.
No, I'm just observant. I like to think I'm observing.
I'm gonna get to that.
C seventy, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request the following communication under suspension of the rules find the proposed C D B G budget slash action plan for the city of Leominster year fifty. See attached.
So this was on the agenda, um, assigned to Finance, but I'm gonna reassign it to Ways and Means. Chairwoman?
Question, uh, regular course, Ms.
Regular course, very well. C seventy has been given regular course. Moving on to forty-five dash twenty-four.
That's it. There we go. We need to schedule a public hearing for C seventy, um, to comply with the rules that Ms. Racine has to deal with for the grant. I would recommend May thirteenth at six-thirty P M.
Okay, will you, Madam Chairwoman?
Yep.
Alright, all those in favor of establishing a public hearing for C seventy on May thirteenth at six-thirty P M, please indicate the usual manner. By a vote of eight to zero, uh, the, um, public hearing has been established. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, uh, forty-five dash twenty-four.
Monarches Regional Planning Commission, Glenn Eaton, Executive Director, requested the following petition to amend the Leominster zoning ordinance and zoning map to create an MBTA multifamily overlay district, and request that you place it on the city council agenda, including with this letter, our proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance and a map depicting the location of the proposed overlay district. As previously agreed, the city of Leominster will be responsible for the public notifications required for the zoning amendment. The MRPC began working in Le- with Leominster's Housing Committee in November twenty-twenty-three to design a district that would meet the requirements of Section three A of Chapter forty A, while protecting and promoting the city's sound development. After investigating multiple areas throughout Leominster and considering various configurations, the committee and the staff of the MRPC agreed that this proposal will meet the requirements of the law in a manner best suited to the unique conditions of the North Leominster neighborhood.
Forty-five dash twenty-four is referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, regular course on this, first time on a calendar. I'm gonna refrain from seeking referrals, because I want to establish a subcommittee meeting, um, and invite, uh, the Massachusetts, I mean, the Monarches Regional Planning Commission to attend. And Madam Clerk, when you send out that invitation, you know, or seek available dates to accommodate them, would you also ask them to be prepared to answer the following question? What are the minimum number of units required based on a calculation of all parcels in the proposed overlay district? And I know this is gonna require two advertisements, so we're gonna have to schedule a public hearing out of Ways. Do you have any suggestions?
So depending on their availability, the soonest we could have a public hearing legally posted in time with the fourteen and seven-day requirement by law is May twenty-seventh for full city council.
Alright, that, that sounds good.
Oh, that might be the twenty-eighth, because I believe that's a holiday weekend, so do you think the twenty-eighth?
Alright, let's do that.
Okay.
Hopefully we'll have a date prior to that for us.
They should be, I can, um, let you know if they have something available a little bit sooner, if we do it on an off day. The earliest it could be would be somewhere around the fifteenth of May.
That would be fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You have time for the May twenty-eighth hearing?
How much time does the council feel would be appropriate for this discussion, before I suggest a time?
For the subcommittee meeting? No, 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 for the, uh, public hearing.
Hearing.
Uh-oh.
Um, we have nothing on currently, but I do know budget season is coming, so that will probably be introduced soon. I want to make sure we have enough time for both.
You might be voting on the budget.
I would say we're gonna need, I mean, it, it, it could, I mean, it's an important issue, and I think it warrants, uh, considerable discussion. And I'd like to have, um, several department heads weigh in as well. So I would say we're gonna need at least an hour.
Would six o'clock be appropriate? In that way, that's a little bit, about fifty minutes? Okay.
Alright.
So we'll say tentatively the twenty-eighth of May at six o'clock, and then if I hear of any further availability, I'll let the council know.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Alright, so, um, you heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Chairman to um, schedule a public hearing on forty-five dash twenty-four on May twenty-eighth at six P M. Sorry, Council Freedom.
Yeah, um, just on this, I agree with the chairman. I think it's important that we look at this, and it's gonna be extensive discussions. And, um, you know, sitting on the Housing Committee, but I think with everything that's happening with some of these other communities and some of the, um, the challenges that they have with some of them, I think we ought to not rush. I mean, we have till December thirty-first, is my understanding, to get this done. And I think it's pretty well on its way from the Housing Committee, um, work that we did. So I think, you know, the discussion is in place, but I really think we need to listen carefully to some of these, cause they're, they're challenging the Attorney General's office, and I think we need to really listen to that. Um, I don't disagree with the plan that's put in place. I think Nashua Street, uh, is one of the main, main places to be looked at for the housing. But whether the state should be telling us where to put our housing is another question. And so I think, um, I think some of the challenges are probably gonna give some interesting answers. So I'd, I'd be interested in hearing that on the way, so that we don't rush it. That would be my only suggestion. Not, not to hold back on having the discussion, but I don't think we're under as much pressure, um, as we could be.
We, we wouldn't anticipate, um, any referrals, um, until our next meeting, obviously, right? So
Follow, following the subcommittee meeting.
Yeah.
And it may take more than one subcommittee meeting. I mean, I, you know, we
Right.
Certainly not rushing anything.
Yes.
Uh, yeah.
May I actually request that you refer it to Planning Department now, because their meeting, they wouldn't even be able to schedule this until June from speaking with, um, Director Wood. And so if we were to refer it to them, at least for the beginning tonight, they can get it on their schedule, so it doesn't have to keep getting kicked, cause they have
Problem is, we don't know what we're gonna be referring to. This is a ordinance that was proposed by MRPC, um, and I think the chairman wants to take a look at what they proposed.
Okay.
So that's, I think, I don't wanna, you know, for the chairman, but I think we need to fine-tune this, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, once, once, I mean, my plan would be, once we have a date from, with MRPC, then we'll send out invitations to, you know, planning board, police, traffic, someone, so.
That's so you know, that's their timeframe right now.
Okay. Fine.
We're, we're talking twenty-eight hundred units, so I mean, I think it's
Do we, do you think we might wanna back that hearing up one more meeting till the first meeting in June?
Yeah.
That's fine with me.
Budget.
When are we getting the budget? Yeah, that's my question.
I heard a supposed rumor that they're aiming for, um, second meeting in May.
Right.
Well, that's what I was
So that, that happened last year. So, um, assuming that that's the case, it would actually be better, the first meeting in June.
Which would be June tenth, at six P M instead.
That makes sense, Mr. Chairman.
Good.
Yeah, at, at six o'clock still.
That sufficient timing? Or do you want more? June tenth is a Monday.
June ten at six P M. That's fine.
It's okay.
Alright, so the suggestion is to, um, give, uh, forty-five dash twenty-four a regular course and schedule a public hearing on June tenth at six P M. All in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, that hearing is established. Financial report. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. We begin fiscal year on July one, twenty-twenty-three with twenty-one million seven hundred and eighty-five thousand five hundred and thirteen dollars and fifty-four cents. We've added four hundred and twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and sixty-four cents in interest. We have paid back, um, million one hundred and fifteen thousand six hundred dollars, once free cash was certified. We still have yet to pay back two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which I'm sure, I know we will be for the end of the fiscal year. So that would bring our total reductions to four million three hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred dollars, and that leaves us a balance of twenty-one million nine hundred and sixty-one thousand seventy dollars and eighteen cents, and that is the financial report.
You? Questions? Councilor Shalhose up?
Yes, through the chair, to the Finance Chair. For the next meeting, would you get an update on the excess and deficiency account? Because we're taking money out of there tonight. I just don't know how much we have in it. And then also, it would be nice just to get routinely, um, that update, as well as the opioid settlement account. Please, thanks.
Okay, yeah, you're welcome. Um, yeah, I'll get, I'll have that for the next meeting. Okay.
Very well, moving on to matters under Finance, starting with C fifty-eight. Is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash fifty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor. Yes, Mr. President. C dash fifty-eight Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of six thousand dollars be made to the city council advertising account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. First, before we move any further, I'm going to ask, I'm going to make a motion that we amend C dash fifty-eight. We got a letter um from the mayor's office. There is a different funding source. This should be coming from excess and deficiency, so I'm going to make a motion that this read C dash fifty-eight Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of six thousand dollars be made to the city council advertising account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account.
You heard a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilor Shaw was up. Uh, all those in favor, please indicate by recognizing usual manner. All right, the C fifteen has been amended amended. Is the uh, chairman ready to further report?
Yes, Mr. President. C dash fifty-eight is amended is um for the following. Um, we got a letter from City Clerk Caitlin Huffman dated March twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four to Mayor Mazarella. Respectfully requesting an additional appropriation of six thousand dollars to the city council advertising count. Currently, the balance of the account is two thousand, four hundred and sixty-seven dollars. That was obviously as of March twenty-eighth. This will not be enough money to cover the advertising for upcoming public hearings and second publishing of passing ordinances in full. Um, so we definitely need this money to get through the rest of the fiscal year, and it would be my recommendation that we pass C dash fifty-eight, and I ask that you check with members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelina?
I'm in agreement as well.
You've heard the infamous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash fifty-eight. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C fifty-eight, please recognize your usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C fifty-eight has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of six thousand dollars be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there anything further? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C fifty-nine.
C dash fifty-nine Dean J. Mazarella, the mayor, requests an appropriation of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be made to the Police Department Public Safety Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency. We have a letter here from Chief Aaron Kennedy dated April one, twenty twenty-four uh, to the mayor. Um, due to extended injury leave contractual obligations for time off, assistance from other city departments for relocation of the of the department to its new headquarters, cleaning out of the old station and additional required work to the new building. Our overtime budget has been depleted, leading us to this request of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in additional overtime. We have a large graduating academy class coming in May timeframe, which should be street ready by August, and we are hopeful this will relieve future overtime demand. Sincerely, Chief Aaron F. Kennedy. So obviously, heard the explanation's pretty self-explanatory. Uh, there's been a lot of need for overtime with the move and such things, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash fifty-nine, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelina?
I'm in agreement as well.
You've heard the infamous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C fifty-nine. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed? C fifty-nine is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars be made to the Police Department to to the, I'm sorry, to the Police Department Public Safety Overtime Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there anything further? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C sixty-two.
C dash sixty-two Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests an appropriation of five thousand, sixty-two dollars be made to the city council advertising account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. I believe that this is for the same purposes as the last one. Correct, Madam Clerk?
Uh, this specifically is due to the MBTA community's um petition. This is about the cost it will be to uh notify your butters to publish the information in the newspaper and to re notify butters of the decision at the end, with whatever it may be. And it's on the city to pay for it because the city has to technically um make the decision to amend it, so we have to pay for it somehow.
Okay, so we are required to do this, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash sixty-two. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, for that explanation. And I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelina?
I agree. So not only do they tell us how to zone, they tell us to pay for it too.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C sixty-two, please indicate in usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C sixty-two has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of five thousand, sixty-two dollars be made to the city council advertising account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request to adopt the order. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C sixty-three.
C dash sixty-three Dean J. Mazarella, mayor, requests that the appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars be made to the Collector's Printing and Postage Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. I did have a, this is not customary. I did have a conversation today with Jen Reddington and Nicole Plant, basically um. Um, Nicole mentioned in a letter here dated April third, the Collector's Office would like to ask for an appropriation in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. This money is necessary to pay for printing and postage for real estate, personal property, and exercise billing for the remainder of the fiscal year. From what I understand, um, when the budget was completed last year, uh, there was, there was a shortfall in the budget. I I think something got inadvertently got a wrong number, a wrong number had gotten put in there, and it was a little short. Um, so it was just, it it was a mistake, and they're going to make up for it by just taking the money uh, from free cash so that we can meet all of our printing obligations for all of these types of things. So it would be my recommendation that we grant, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier? Council Angelina?
I'm in agreement.
Heard the infamous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C sixty-three. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C sixty-three, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, C sixty-three has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of fifteen thousand dollars be made to the Collector Printing and Postage Account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order has been adopted. Moving on to Legal Affairs. And twenty-five dash twenty-four, is the chairman ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. Twenty-five dash twenty-four Peter Angelini Wood five, councillor, requests to revise and amend limits to city ordinance by inserting a new section regarding short-term rental units, see attached. Mr. President, as you're aware, we had a conducted a public hearing early this evening. We closed the public hearing. Um, it would be my recommendation that this petition be given leave to withdraw without prejudice, and I would ask you to check with members of my committee.
Very well, Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
And Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the infamous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give twenty-five dash twenty-four leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving twenty-five dash twenty-four leave to draw without prejudice, please indicate usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, twenty-five dash twenty-four has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to forty-one dash twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forty-one dash twenty-four Officer Julio Ramos, Leominster Police Department, requests to amend Chapter thirteen of the revised ordinance entitled Motor Vehicles in Traffic. Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash twenty-four, the revised ordinance entitled No Parking on Certain Streets by inserting the following text, Church Street, West Side, south of Miriam Avenue for one hundred and thirty-six feet, Church Street, West Side, starting from two hundred and forty-eight feet south from Miriam Avenue, ending at the intersection of Church Street and West Street. Uh, once again, Mr. President, we conducted a public hearing early this evening and closed it. Uh, Mr. Rossberry was kind enough to attend from representing the D P W and Officer Ramos, and obviously um, this petition uh is written incorrectly, as Mr. Rossberry explained, uh, portion of it should have been deleted. So uh, I I think we've, we, Mr. Rossberry indicated that the petition be given leave to withdraw without prejudice, and that's that would be my recommendation, and I ask you to call members of my committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
And Councilor Pauline Cormier? Heard the infamous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give forty-one dash twenty-four leave to withdraw without prejudice. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting of granting forty-one dash twenty-four leave to withdraw without prejudice, please indicate in usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero, forty-one dash twenty-four has been given leave to withdraw without prejudice. Moving on to forty-four dash twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President. Forty-four dash twenty-four is Peter Angelini Wood five, councillor, requests to amend the city of Leominster zoning ordinance by inserting the following text under definitions, short-term rental S or plural. The use of a residential unit for residential occupancy by a person or persons for a period fewer than thirty-one consecutive calendar days for a fee. A short-term rental may or may not be arranged uh, through a booking agent. Also, by inserting the following text under the table of uses, short-term rentals shall be prohibited in Residence A. We have a public hearing scheduled on this petition for May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four at six fifty P M. But while um, this is on the table, I'd like to take this opportunity to amend it with an additional sentence, Mr. President. That amendment would be all other short-term rental zones will be allowed pursuant to state law and listed under the table of uses.
In the second from Mr. Chairman's uh, motion?
Second down.
Council Cormier, a second, any discussion? Council Freedom?
I really think that this should be given leave to withdraw and to come up with a new one and have the accurate wording. Uh, we keep amending things. We drag them on for two, three months on the same topic. Um, there's going to be a lot of questions about it. Why wouldn't we just give it leave to withdraw? Insert what you want to insert and and bring it back the way you want us to vote on it. I I just think that would be the proper way to do it.
Council?
Well, I I think this isn't going to take nearly as long as the original petition that was given was early, and I'll tell you why. Um, we've established through the city solicitor that no one has a conflict of interest if they reside in Residence A. That was something that held us up for a while. And uh, we have referrals coming in already on this, and so we're waiting for the planning board referral. So I I'm certainly not entertaining leave to withdraw at this time.
I did have an opportunity to talk to the city solicitor about whether that um type of amendment would require would require a new petition, and he said, no. So it's just really filling a gap. There's nothing listed for all the other zones, so it's just essentially what the chairman is suggesting, is it would just be pursuant to state law, which there isn't a requirement right now in the state law. If you want to have a short-term rental, you got to register it with the state. Uh, other than that, it's it's all I know you have to really do, um, other than comply with health codes or whatever else that might be applicable. So it's a, it's a minor amendment, it just makes it cleaner.
And all due respect, I think the planning board brought up some issues about other um, other zones in the city. Um, I think they should be brought into the, ideally, if we want to look at this, and I think we should, because I think we should, if if we're going to allow it in the city, we ought to be able to be getting occupancy taxes on it. I think that's the objective here is what I'm, what I'm gathering. But I think the planning board should be involved in the discussion. There should be a joint meeting, maybe, to be able to have, no, you don't want to do that, but I mean, you're shaking your head. I I understand what you're saying. I'm giving, I have the floor, and I'm giving my opinion. I think there are a lot of issues with this. We went through three and a half months of this. We all listened to a number of people calling us about the same topic. Um, we can say that the solic- city solicitor held this up if we want. Um, some of that was true. We have one opinion, we'd ask for another opinion, then there'd be a third opinion, then a fourth opinion, then we'd put votes off. This this was dragged out for four months. And I think if we're going to do this, we start off right away before the public hearing amending it. So I think we should, it might be just to fill a gap, but I think it's an important gap, and I think we need to do it right. And I just don't think that we're doing a lot of things right when we we just keep amending or suspending and changing things.
Council.
As was mentioned earlier, um, the Building Commissioner has already ruled that short-term rentals are prohibited in Residence A. That's been established. No one's challenging that. What this does, and if you read Brian Riley's opinions, this takes any ambiguity out of the zoning ordinance. And the amendment that I just made tightens it up, so there's no question. Um, so I I don't, let's see what the building inspector comes back with for referral. The planning board's going to have an opportunity to issue a referral, and again, we're not changing anything. We're just codifying what the building inspector interprets zoning to already reflect.
Yeah, and that's a good point that Council Angelina made. Council Riley did suggest affirmatively an opinion that he believes it's already prohibited in Leominster in Residence A, but he thought it might be better to make it clear with an ordinance. That's all we do. Council Freedom and Council Shaw.
Through the chair, and all due respect to the chairman, the building inspector said in December that it was prohibited, and nobody here wanted to believe that it was prohibited. And you, we wanted to add, we wanted to add this extra language to say that the building inspector, we always had a criticism. Yeah, we had him before us, and we really didn't agree uh, with what he said as a body. So um, now, now we're all in agreement that the building inspector said that, and it's good. I I.
We we got an opinion from Council Riley, and Council Riley ultimately agrees with the building inspector, but he added a proviso that it would be better if you had an ordinance because it's not, you know, it's not black and white clear. He thinks it's clear, but it's not as clear as it should be, which is what the attempt here to do is, is to support what the building inspector said. That's all we're trying to do. Not that complicated. Council Shaw was up.
Thank you very much. You know, my concern is that even though the amendment, you know, you can argue that it's important or not important or simple or whatever, but there are five referrals out that won't have that language. You know, the building inspector, the health director, the police, the fire department, and the planning board will all get the, they've, they already have received the amended version.
Madam Clerk, can you update every one of those referrals? None of them have, I I don't think other than the police chief, we have anybody, anything back yet, right?
Just the chief.
We haven't ordered the amendment yet.
To um, amend his uh, referral based on the new language. If, that's if it passes. It hasn't passed yet. We have an amendment on the floor. Any other discussion? Uh, all those in favor of the amendment, please recognize usual manner. By a vote of six to two, the amendment uh has passed, and um, we have to give this further time as well. I assume that's your request.
Yes.
So you heard the request. I'll check with the Embassy Committee. Sorry, Councilor Tossi? Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Six to two, that's eight.
Seven to two, I'm sorry. Okay, uh, you heard the request for further time, uh, any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting forty-four dash twenty-four further time, please recognize usual manner. A vote of seven to two.
I'm opposed.
Seven to two. All right, moving on to Page six, City Property Committee, starting with C fifty-seven.
... hereby, prepared to share for the purpose of the pass. Further authorized. Mayor to debate the parts of land located on the northerly side of Bassett Street, Leominster, known as Parcell A, forty-one, five hundred ninety-three. B, plus or minus, Parcell B, four hundred and. Parcel B, four hundred and eighty.
But it's all going to change or it'll remain private. So that this will all be out the window if we convey it because it's going to be laid out completely differently is what we're getting at. Okay.
In essence, what you have there now is a stalemate because there isn't enough. No one has enough land to do anything.
Right.
Because of the street goes right down the middle of it.
Thank you.
Have the utmost respect for your attorney come by us all. But we are sitting here as a council with a request before us to to declare allow the mayor to declare land surplus so that your client can pursue building housing in that area. So I think we're asking the questions of the wrong. We're asking for an understanding of what the process is on your end. But from our opinion, to protect the taxpayer and I fully understand it's probably useless. But I think the proper process would be through our city solicitor and to find out exactly what those lots configure and what your plan, what their opinion of your plan is, I think that would be the proper way to look at it. I mean, I'm concerned that we're even, we're not even fixing south. There's no Worcester South Registry. I don't know why that's in there and I don't think we need to wait for the city solicitor to tell us.
You know?
That that's wrong.
I, I, the chair, Mr. President, I didn't prepare the communication. And I think it's just the typo because it's, it should be the Worcester North Registry of Deeds.
Okay.
Because that's the registry.
I know that attorney.
The Worcester. It has to be an old deed for it to be.
But there was a little bit of Worcester South.
Right. It would be Worcester. It would be Worcester. But in a lot of people refer to it as Worcester South because they think it's opposite of Worcester North.
So I just think there's a lot of questions. We're looking at a lot of different maps, some that are old, some that are crossed over, some that fill that replaced another one. I couldn't download, you made the comment, Madam Clerk, that we couldn't, and I tried printing it out and I couldn't because it just expanded. So I couldn't see the plan except to try to look at it on my phone, which was, we didn't get it till four o'clock this afternoon or three o'clock this afternoon, whatever it was. So, I mean, I don't think that's ample time. I don't know if the chairman would think that that's ample time to look at this and make sure we're doing the right. This is taxpayer owned. It's not city, it's not mayor, it's the taxpayer that owns this piece of property. And I think we need to be sure that everybody's, not that they have to agree, but they should at least be aware of it in the area that that surrounds this property. Because let's, let's face it, the way it is now, it's vacant. The minute we relinquish that piece, it's going to be a development. How is that going to affect? And who is it going to affect? And we're asking you, but you represent the person that wants to develop it, not asking for our attorneys to give us their opinion on what this would actually look like.
Covered by law, we can't just, you know, give it away to somebody other than Curly. Even though they do have a purchase and sale agreement, until it goes through the appraisal and that that process, if you know, has to be done, can't do anything. We're taking a piece of property and I spoke to the mayor about this and it's, it's really usually to pay the property, talk about paying taxpayers money, but not getting any taxes on that property. Or if it's paid, if somebody can put a development in there, we will get real estate taxes from it. Our taxpayers in a situation.
Through the chair to the chairman, maybe we wouldn't want to relinquish that piece. And I think that's, that's a discussion to be had. We didn't get this till four o'clock today to look at it. So to be able to look at this and, and get some questions answered before we decide that that's what we want to do and open that up, that area up for development. I, and I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but I just think that we're acting a little quick here. We drag other things out for three months and now we get this at four o'clock and we're expected to vote on it tonight. That, that's, that's my concern. That's, that's all. I'm not necessarily opposed to it. Through the chair to you, I don't have a clear conscience. So speak for you.
Hold your conscience, that's all. Anything further, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you. So I'm looking at a plan and in the written, if you want to take a look at this because I, it just, I'm confused.
Yes. Okay. That's the plan that's prepared by, it's entitled, owned by the City of Leominster, prepared by Haley Ward. And it's dated March 21st, 2024, if you look in the bottom right hand corner.
Well, no, I have something that's FWP Realty Partners LLC, February 7th, 2024. That's what I have. And that's why maybe I'm confused because, yeah, 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 but it's a different date.
Okay.
So in the description of the property, and you just said that parcel A is not part, is not going to be developed, I guess there's not part of the paper road. And then parcel B, but on here, I can't tell what's parcel A and what's parcel B.
Okay, so parcel A would be the strip. If you notice where it says City of Leominster, Book Nine, 23, page 18, that strip that runs from Bassett Street across to the proposed street, that's parcel A.
That's not going to be developed as a, that's. You know what? This is very helpful because, so that parcel A, which goes from Bassett across, and this parcel A that is city-owned runs parallel to Bassett, which is up by the Lassie League fields, right?
Yeah.
So parcel B, which is the other little street that runs up into the parking lot of the Lassie League Field, correct? And that's the parcel that you want to develop or your, your client, excuse me, wants to develop. Parcel B is the one that wants to be developed. So that's really helpful because that raises all kinds of issues for me or all kinds of questions for me because I'm very familiar with the Lassie League Field. I think other people here might be as well. And the, the parking there, the, the traffic there, it's overwhelming at times. I mean, it's just a very congested area. So how, so anyways, that's just my concern. But, you know, the other thing, I guess, and this is really through the chair to the, councillor at large. I mean, we just don't have a lot of information. You know, you, you've have a ENS agreement. There's been a valuation done and an appraisal done and this, there's a lot of information and there might be more information that would make me feel, you know, if I had more information, I guess I'd feel better about it. You know, if I knew that there was some value, if I knew that the taxpayers were actually getting some value, because this is, you know, it's, it has some value, right? Depending on its use. So if I knew what that was, I might feel better about, you know, it's not a matter of voting my conscience, it's about voting in my mind, what makes the most sense for, you know, the community at large. And I'm not, and I, you know, I respect what you're trying to do and I understand what, you know, Mr. Napoli is trying to do, but I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what makes the most sense and what kind of information I need to just feel comfortable with this. Can I keep this?
Let's see. But what we're voting on now is whether this is surplus property or not. And it is, you know, as it stands. Where if something happens, we can, this is declared surplus and it's conveyed to somebody who can develop the land, it's got to go through the planning board. That will address all your issues about parking for the Lassie League Field and any improvement that has to be made to Bassett Street as part of their plan before they can, you know, build anything. And we all know, I won't say we all know, I shouldn't say that forever. But Leominster seems to have a, a housing shortage, shortage. And even if we had four, five or six, you know, new houses, it certainly will improve the tax base a little bit. It will improve the tax base. More houses.
Through the chair to the councillor at large, the, 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 I was speaking with the Recreation Department, the Recreation Commission Chair this afternoon because I thought the Recreation Commission, you know, along with the Conservation Commission, those are the folks that manage the Lassie League Fields. So I asked them, I said, geez, have you heard about this? No, no one had heard about it. And somebody went up and looked at it and they thought, no, you know, there's no problem. But I don't think they understood and I didn't understand at the time the parcel that, you know, was critical to this development, right, is at the end of their parking lot. So there, I was told that the Lassie League parking is all being redone. So that, so the city is making an investment in improving that area and also expanding some of the fields because the high school teams are going to play there. So I guess, you know, is, is there value to the city? I mean, I don't know that people who have an interest in this, like the Recreation Department and all the Conservation Commission, I'm not sure that they don't have an interest in this. It's not, it's, I don't see it as straightforward and simple. And I just want to ask the question and they might say, no.
Unfortunately, the land's in the wrong place. If the, if the land was a budding basset, it'd be a whole different story. But where the land is, it's an island.
Parcel B, parcel B comes out onto Bassett.
But it's not developed. It's not a street. So, so at the bottom line is, is that, you know, maybe in the planning department is the place to make the argument, increase the parking, you know, maybe increase the width of Bassett. Those are the arguments for later on, as councillor at large indicate. Anyway, anything further before we vote on this? Council Angelina?
Real quick, Mr. President. I mean, I'm reminded that our function, right, the mayor is asking us to declare the surplus. What happens afterwards is an executive function. You know, that's, that's how our charter works. So it's really not our job to determine what the highest and best use of this property is. We've done this on Jungle Road. We've, the mayor has asked us to declare other land surplus. That's really as far as our authority goes. So I know it's easy to get mission creep and everybody has the best of intentions, but, you know, I just want to remind everyone, ultimately that decision, once, once it's declared surplus becomes the mayor's decision.
Also, Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Through the chair of the board fire councillor, I don't consider it mission creep. I consider it doing my due diligence so that I really understand that the, that the land is in fact surplus. I mean, I'm not sure that there isn't another use for this, so.
Second, yeah.
We're still in recess.
Yeah, yeah.
All right. Let's, anything further? All right. We're going to be, we're going to come out of recess and I'm going to suggest to the Chair of City Property, you might want to consider an amendment to strike the word Worcester South and replace it with Worcester North. Want to make that motion? Anybody want to second that? Council Angelina? All those in favor of the, any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please recognize usual manner. Opposed by a vote of nine to zero, it's been amended. And I believe we have a recommendation from City Property on the floor, a split recommendation, two to one. Anything further before we vote? This will be by roll call. Is that with Council, Council Freedom?
I understand that, that is a, I don't want to say a rush on this. But I feel a little bad though. You have one member of the committee, and I know he can speak for himself, but he has some extra questions. He's a member of the committee. Out of courtesy, wouldn't you just want to give further time for one, one meeting to be able to have him get the answer to his questions?
Two to one by the committee.
I understand that, but I have, I, it, it, I, it's just an observation that, a little courtesy, if you have one member.
Anything else besides that observation?
Excuse me?
Anything else besides that observation?
No, there isn't anything, but my, I think my observation, I like to think it matters sometimes.
Okay, well, you made your observation. So now we're going to vote. Council David Cormier?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council Oringer?
Yay.
Council Angelina?
Yay.
Council Tossi?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Nay.
Council Robbins?
Nay.
Council Freedom?
Nay.
And I'll be recorded as yay by a vote of six to three, C57 has been granted. Will we go to C60? Is that, that is a two thirds vote. We go to C61.
Here's state property. Council voter. Property. First, we would $500,000 of the customer's bank plan. As you know, last year, this property approved as a subdivision, which is what our appraisal was based on. Subdivision does not yet be like in our assessment database. Pre proceeding years tax assessment is $149,999. Means the city cannot purchase property. Five percent of that guy. Since the city has paid $875,000, it pays value capable of law recommendations that the council approved, pay the eminent domain taking, given regular course of four eight. And yeah, as you have, I had asked for a control. Aaron says, I am attaching the, that was sent regarding the land grant, here's property, here's state property. Councillor Artinger requested that a referral from her office attached to the original petition and councillor Sue Chalfo Zephyr requested to know the reason why we were doing the taking. The letter spells out the reasoning behind the taking. I also provided the appraisal in a separate email. There really isn't anything else to, for the officer to, for information. And let's see. Back of this, it is just signed by Wendy Weeks that's pretty much had, but he's asking you that the here's state property be taken by eminent domain. And I know that property is voted on, the subdivision was probably never going to happen. That's why the appraisal is coming up much less and, you know, we're able to take it by eminent domain, which might, recommendation for the grant C61.
Council Robbins?
I agree.
And Council Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the City Property Committee to grant C61. Is there any further discussion? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
I'm going to recuse myself from this. I recused myself from the original vote.
Basis?
As well. Yeah, we have prior business experience with one of the owners.
Okay. Council Freedom?
Through the chair, I like to quote the chairman who just said, if we got five houses on Bassett Street, that'd be a plus to the City of Leominster. Now we're going to take land that has a possibility of 13, but we're going to buy it instead for $875,000 or take it by eminent domain and not have any housing there. I guess I, I have a question as to why we would take it. I understand, exactly before anybody wants to say you don't get it. I fully understand the fact that we're being asked to take it by eminent domain because we're being asked to pay in excess of what the, the actual value of the property is. Right? You said value of the property, which we shouldn't be paying more than $623,000, which would be 25% above the 499. So we're being asked to vote tonight to take something by eminent domain that's over assessed, overvalued. That's basically what we're, what we're being asked to do tonight.
It's a little more complicated than that.
Excuse me?
It's a little more complicated than that.
It, it's always more complicated than that. It's always more complicated.
I would ask you to refrain from making your aspersions and comments that ever.
No aspersion.
That's you. You do it all the time. Stop.
No, because you want to help me when it's not what you want to hear.
Council Oringer has the floor.
It's all granted up there. It's stone.
Through the chair, what am I missing? If it's undevelopable, why would we pay $875,000?
Thank you, Mr. President. Let me see if I can. No, the property is listed at the assessors office for $499,000 as raw land.
Swamp land.
Excuse me, council, I have the floor.
I apologize. You're right.
Thank you. This is, this is a receipt from the Registry of Deeds. And my law was recorded on 3/25/2024. So that plan, the my law, the approved subdivision, which obviously makes the property worth significantly more than the raw land that was assessed at $499,000. So the appraisal we have is for what, 875? 875,000. We're getting back 500,000 from the state. So the cost to the city is 375,000. So it is, this is my law right here. So that won't be reflected at the assessors office.
So that's fiscal year.
Right? And I know from, I can tell you from experience as the executive director of the land trust involved in a number of these conservation land purchases, is always some kind of little stumbling block, whether someone shows up without a stopple certificate at the closing or whatever. This is, this is just general housekeeping because in order to qualify for the grant, it has to be reflected that the property value meets the appraised value. Well, now we are, because of the subdivision approval, we are in the appropriate value. It's no longer 499 as raw land. It has a subdivision approval. That justifies the appraisal for rate 75 and that's where we are right now.
Fiscal 24 valuation is based on the value of the property as of January of 2023. So it doesn't, that doesn't pick up or did not pick up the recorded subdivision, which of course changes the entire game.
Correct.
And the appraisal was done January 1, June 1, 2023.
Yeah, the subdivision was approved. They just sat on reporting the my law plan.
So anything further? Okay, by roll call, councillor David Cormier?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council Artinger?
Yay.
Council Angelina?
Yay.
Council Tossi?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr, you're staying, sorry. Council Robbins?
Yay.
Council Freedom?
Nay.
And I'll be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to one. C61 has been granted. Moving on to Ways and Means, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. 42-24 EC OATM LLC requests to renew license at 11 Jungle Road, Leominster, Mass. This was given regular course on April 8th. I can tell you that the paperwork is all in order, the insurance is in order, they have their letters of good standing. It would be my recommendation that we renew this license and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Oringer?
I agree.
Council David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 42-24. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting 42-24, please recognize the usual manner. Opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 42-24 has been granted. Moving on to 43-24.
Thank you, Mr. President. 43-24 Christopher Reeveard, 28 Arch Street, Douglas, Mass. Request to renew transient vendor license with the City of Leominster. This was given regular course on April 8th. All of the paperwork is in order. We received the letters of good standing, so it would be my position to grant 43-24 and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Oringer?
I agree.
Council David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to grant 43-24. Is there any further discussion? Seeing, Council Freedom?
Just to comment, this gentleman has been around since I've been around. Oh, he's, must do something right because he's been here over 30 years and I, I think it's pretty, uh, pretty neat that he's here every year, so.
By the way, I'm Mike the hot dog man. All right. Anything further? All those in favor of granting 43-24, please recognize usual manner. Opposed by a vote of nine to zero, 43-24 has been granted and let's wish Mr. Reeveard a happy retirement too. Moving on to reappointments, is the chairwoman ready to report?
Thank you, Mr. President. C-60 Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor, requests the reappointment of the following to the Leominster Cultural Commission term to expire April 15th, 2027. Caitlin Montagna at 108 Adams Street in Leominster. And the License Commission term to expire April 15th, 2030. James Kelly Jr. of 32 Grant Street. These are reappointments. These people have served and, and, and I would, I would move that we grant the reappointment and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Council Oringer?
I agree.
Council Cormier?
I also agree.
All right, unless there's any objection, I'm going to do it in block. And it'll be by roll call. Councillor David Cormier?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council Oringer?
Yay.
Council Angelina?
Yay.
Council Tossi?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Robbins?
Yay.
Council Freedom?
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay. Both of the appointments have been confirmed. Any new business? Council David Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I would like to just take a moment to ask for a moment of silence in a, in a minute. This community lost someone who's very special to everybody. Former councillor Jim Lanciani, who served the city in many, many different capacities in probably is 50 years, past 50 years, if not more, passed away a week ago today. And his funeral was this morning. And a few of us were there and there were, you know, many people from the community that attended. And so I just wanted to, you know, say that, you know, our, our condolences are with his family, his, his daughter and son and grandchildren, few great grandchildren now. And he will be missed. And a man like him will never be replaced in the City of Leominster. He was, he was just, Jimmy was Jimmy. If you knew him, you know exactly what I'm talking about. And if you didn't have the privilege of knowing him, it's just hard to describe. He was unique. There is nobody that I know that was like him. And so I just wanted to ask for a moment of silence.
Very well, that may be done. Thank you. Is there any further new business? Council Freedom? Thank you. That's good. Any old business? Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Thank you very much. Yeah, this is old business. I had asked the mayor, I get asked almost daily for an update on what's happening with flood assistance. So I asked the mayor and he responded to me by email, so I just wanted to give this update. So this is from him today. Currently, we are waiting a decision on the FEMA appeal to proceed with additional work, with any additional work. The state reached out to us on the Burj Av Project because this was a project we had been pursuing prior to the flooding and they suggested we apply for the MVP grant for this project. The $1,750,000 that we've already spent this year was for temporary fixes so that we could get the roads open and address any immediate safety issues. We have submitted 75 damaged city sites to FEMA and the Federal Highway Administration totaling approximately 30 million in damages. Those sites were submitted originally in an attempt to get the disaster declaration approved and are now part of the appeal. Since that time, we have identified additional damage and will continue to build on our list. If the appeal is approved, each damaged site will become an individual project and our consultants will work to get each paid under the declaration. If the appeal is not approved, we will prioritize sites and work to match each damaged area with available grant funds. So I think that's important because I get, every time I'm out and about, you know, I have people asking me what's going on. And additionally, I wanted to mention that early and earlier this year, like in January, the mayor also reached out to, well, the city reached out and myself and councillor Robbins, we met with Congressman Jim McGovern about the Army Corps of Engineers and asking whether the city might be able to use the Army Corps of Engineers to help with some of the flood damage remediation. And Representative McGovern did include that ask in this year's budget. So we should know more. I know that the city worked with him. I know myself and councillor Robbins worked with Congressman McGovern. And hopefully, you know, we will be able to see some of that assistance. Hopefully it will get passed and approved and the Army Corps, hopefully we would be able to know something by the fall. Second on my list of old business is at our last meeting, one of the councillors here
Second on my list of old business is, at our last meeting, one of the councillors here went on a little bit of a rant about the, our federal delegation and the money that they don't bring back to the district. So I did a little bit of research, looked at their websites, did a little bit of asking around, and most recently, Congressman McGovern, the City of Lemmonster, just got an award of $750,000 to build a community center down in Ward 2. So that was quite, quite a nice appropriation, I thought, and that just came in. That was one thing. Then there was a million dollars, I think, for the North Star Affordable Housing Project in North Lemmonster, both Senator Markey and Senator Warren, along with Congressman McGovern, because they all have to work together, they got a million dollars for that, and there are some other projects, too, some money for additional screening and health alliance to help local people get up-to-date technology when they go to their doctors with various problems. So I have a real list here, and if anybody is interested in what the congressman has brought back specifically to Lemmonster, it's easily available on his website. Thank you.
Councillor, could you please supply the email that you read into the record regarding the mayor to the clerk, so she'll have it as part of the record?
She was copied on it. You were copied it. The city clerk has it, because you were copied on the email.
What day is it for?
It's from today. Yeah.
What time?
9:52 AM.
All right, well, we'll make sure we have.
Date, no, 10:15 AM, I'm sorry. Is when I got it, I got it at 10 AM, but you know, you're copied on it. If you don't have it, let me know, and I'll...
Send it in case, because our internet's been going in and out, and they've been swapping back and forth, so it might not have come through on my end.
Certainly, I will do that. Yeah, no problem.
Thank you, councillor. Anything else? Entertained, well, we have a community calendar. Entertained a motion to adjourn? Second, councillor Robbins, all in favor? You're adjourned.
The Lemmonster City Council meeting is funded in part by Decareless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com, and by Avidia Bank at www.avidiabank.com.